Tonight's agenda.
And also, Mr. Trager.
Minutes of November 6th, 2017, I'll entertain a motion to accept the stated.
So moved.
For favor?
Hi.
Privilege of the floor. Anybody here to speak this evening?
I just had a quick thing and wanted to say thank you to the board for your support for the program Nano Reino. And I shout out to Mr. Loes. My daughter participated and it has been a game changer for her as far as seeing herself as a writer, which she says now she's a novelist. And just going to pick up, seeing all those kids in there just at it, writing and just, it was amazing to see. So just wanted to say thank you for that work.
Thank you. Okay. Principals report. Julie. More yours.
Hold it, we, November's busy, just as October and September. It's a fun place to be. On November 8th, Plymouth Elementary School held its annual tribute to our veterans. And as always, it was a very special morning with local veterans and veterans from Plymouth Elementary School, parents, Mr. Lebec, a retired teacher, and our Mrs. Marinowski up at the front desk also sat as a veteran and spent some time honoring them. Later in the, or the following week, we had a full house on both Tuesday and on Wednesday for our annual Thanksgiving luncheons. And thank you to the middle school students who helped serve a delicious turkey dinner. The cafeteria was festive with tablecloths and candles that were created by our first graders, and I actually think we could probably sell those, they're really beautiful. The walls were decorated with student art and writing, all expressing gratitude for the season. And just a shout out to Mrs. Carey, who does a lot of the behind the scenes works for, work for that event. On Tuesday, November 28th, Plymouth Elementary School hosted Rachel's Challenge, a beautiful program that promotes kindness. We are on a two-year rotation with Rachel's Challenge, so that every two years, we host the program here and bring it back. And it's no surprise that our students respond by starting right away with a chain reaction of good deeds and kindness throughout the community. Some of the highlights of the program include leaving a legacy of kindness, showing compassion, practicing acceptance, and learning from your mistake. A special thank you to PES teacher, parent, and community member Andy McDonald for his leadership in bringing Rachel's Challenge. And as Ms. Murphy said, Plymouth Elementary School had 19 students participate in the after-school program, National NA November Writing Month, better known as Nano Reino. Very clever. Thirteen of the students met their goals for words written, they establish a number of words, but then they can just write what they want to write. Sixth grader Leah Bisong wrote 40,359 words. Other writers who met goals and are commended for their novels, Hannah Leclair, Katie Park, Sarah Craigie, Addison England, Abby Park, Caitlin Missimer, Ainsley Gerard, Brianna Strickland, Liz Douglas, Logan Wiget, and Karina Flynn and Xavier O'Reilly. In looking at the whole Nano Reino, you know, nationally, actually internationally, the executive director, Grant Faulkner, says that Nano Reino ignites people's superheroic creative powers every year by empowering them to write their stories. It takes courage, grit, and resilience in wild imaginative leaps to write so many words toward a novel. And then they listed some of the authors who have done the whole Nano Reino, regular, published, read some of these books. I'm like, wow, they were Nano Reino graduates. And they include Sander Groen's Water for Elephants, Erin Morgan Stern's The Night Circus, Huey Howie's Wool, Rainbow Rolls, Fangirl, Jason Huff's The Darwin Elevator, and Marissa Meyer's Cinder. So I have no doubt that somebody from Plymouth Elementary School will be on that list. And as Ann had mentioned, Mrs. Deloche should be commended, really. She brings a lot of joy and fun. They have a great time, they go to 6:30 every night, and they do a lot of fun activities, movement activities throughout that time that they're here, so. And on November 14th, Plymouth Elementary School hosted the first of this year's series of Mathalons. Fourteen schools competed. Students answering, answer challenging questions in categories like numbers and operations, algebra, geometry, and problem solving. Plymouth came in fourth last year, but we were expecting that. First place went to Guilford, second to Laconia, and third to Camden. Mr. Greenler, the coach, noted that half of our team is comprised of seventh graders, so the future looks bright. And the math stars include Hannah Leclair, Nolan Prince, Matt Cleary, Noah DeTyle, Ruby Furbish, Ethan Gerard, Anton Smith, Jack Sullivan, Logan Wiget, and Abby Park. And this past weekend was a great one at Plymouth Elementary School. Saturday morning, we had about over 100 community members turn out to run the Seventh Annual, seven years, Seventh Annual Jingle Bell Run and Pancake Breakfast. And what a team effort led by Sarah Sanborn. We have a beautiful running site, and it was fun to see the mixed ages. And afterward, Janet King and Valerie Bickford from Cafe Services worked with our crew to serve pancakes, bacon, fruit. My mantra was pancakes, pancakes. So it was a great, great community event with registrations and donations, raising over $1,500 toward winter program scholarships. That, and then later that evening, we were talking about how great the parade was. Plymouth Elementary School Student Council had a float and enjoyed that, but it was also fun to see the hockey players and the gymnasts and the Girl Scouts. It was a great, great event, so. This week, we have on Thursday, Justin Spencer from Recycled Percussion is coming from 1 to 2, and we're gonna have, kindergarten, come on over. K through 5 students, and we're also hosting Wentworth and Rumney as well. So we're really super excited about that. Parents are definitely welcome. And then Friday, Community Service Day. From Student Council, students will be out and about doing lots of good work. And then December 13th and 20th, winter program begins.
Briefly, I just wanted to update us on the winter sports. Mr. Underwood gave me some information. Everybody's already practicing and underway, and he wanted to let you know the numbers. So right now, in wrestling, we have 21 participants. Boys, 7th and 8th grade basketball, 12. Girls, 7th and 8th basketball, 10. Boys, 5th and 6th grade basketball, 22. And girls, 5th and 6th grade basketball, 21. And then the cross-country skiing, that's boys and girls combined, is 21. So decent numbers. He said that they expected the numbers to be a little bit lower in the 7th and 8th grade basketball teams, but the numbers in the 5th and 6th obviously should help us out here coming up here in the future. The annual 5th and 6th grade basketball tournament is set for Wednesday, February 7th, through Sunday, February 11th, and this is the 28th year of holding that tournament. Then the last part is the Elks Hoop Shoot. The first round of it took place back on Wednesday, November 15th, over at Plymouth High School. And our PES representatives in the 8th and 9th year old group were Matthew Valente and Iris Lamero, both of them earning first place. In the 10th and 11th year old, it was Lucas Diamond and Samantha Bachelor. And Luke earned first place again in his age group. And at age 12 and 13, it was Aiden O'Brien and Anna Aprilliano. Anna finished second overall, and Aiden took first. So all those students that ended up finishing in first place, Matthew, Iris, Luke, and Aiden, they will advance to the next round, which is over in Guilford sometime in early January. I'm not sure if it was January 7th or January 17th, something like that. So that's it in the world of sports.
ESPN.
I know.
Consent items, claims and payroll? Any correspondence, Mark?
We did. We received approval from the state for our programs, Great Thrive, 5 through 8. We used to call them L5, they're now SOAR. And that program was approved again by the state. And the former NCR program, we now call Boost, and that program was again approved by the state. So we have new personnel, we have new names, and programs are going well. And it's, we got a very complimentary review by the state for the quality of the program, so should be pretty proud.
Discussion items. Fiscal year 18 budget update.
Yes. Appropriations totals in front of you. They're tracking, as we expect. The bottom line is not as good as it looks, we just haven't done some of the encumbering. And I also need to go in and clean up some things. There's a couple expenses I don't understand. So, but I have not spent any time with your bookkeeper, so I will be doing that in the next couple of weeks. But all in all, big picture, we're online to break even on the appropriations side. Long way to go, lots of surprises in this sort of business, but so far, so good.
Any questions for Mark? Fiscal year 19 draft budget proposal.
All right, this is the first, first look at next year's budget. And I'm gonna give you three sheets. One is a blue sheet that sort of outlines the highlights and the lowlights. The other single sheet will be a revenue sheet, and then the appropriations totals. And I will walk through what Julie and I have put together for your first, first round of the budget. Usually, tonight is the night you take it all in, and then we say in January, be ready to talk about these issues. And Julie has a couple of grades for you to look at as we talk about the RTI program, so. I know I've heard from numerous members from the community about the impact of the tax rate, and I am very cognizant of that. So I think this budget reflects that. At the same time, it keeps our core programs solid. And we have few things to talk about, but all in all, the core program is intact. So let me hand these out. I'm gonna go through the blue sheet, that's the story of the budget, condensed version. And then you'll get a feel for the big picture. The 1,100 account contains 33.6 positions. That's everyone who's here right now. And Julie has a request for a third kindergarten teacher that is out there, and we'll talk about that. There may be opportunities to consolidate from three teachers to two teachers in some 1 through 5 classes. It would be a consideration if we keep the RTI model that we're using, and that RTI position is in the budget. The position that we've removed from the budget is the vacant .6 music position. So that's not in the budget. And please note that this account is exclusive of any negotiated collective bargaining increases. They would be on a Warren article for the voters to vote on. The other accounts are either level funded or down. In the case of line 11 supplies, Julie and Kelly are gonna lead an effort to use up everything we have in the building. Oftentimes, people order things as sort of a routine. We're gonna go through the closet, we've done this in a couple of buildings, we're going through the closets and just say, you know, all the stuff is out in the library, take what you need. And you'd be surprised, the stuff that we have in the building, we haven't done that in a while. In the 1,200 account, special ed, there's a significant reduction in the special ed salary account. But those salaries, we're really cleaning up the way we do preschool, and we're trying to get all the expenses for preschool in one place. So you'll see that a lot of salaries have moved to the 1,840 account. And the position of director has been moved into the SAU office. It's been consolidated with another, with another position. It would be all grant funded. So that's, that's a half a position that's out of the Plymouth budget. It was grant funded anyway, it's just been moved out of your budget. So it's nice, it's a lot cleaner for the auditors as they track the federal money. And the other salary reductions in that account, we had a lot of retirements in there, and they were, there was some one-time money that was in that account, that's been eliminated. And then also with some staff turnover, that reflects some savings also. Special ed aides reflects 21 paras, and that's based on IEPs and programming. Co-curricular, there are some salary reductions, and they're gonna reflect fewer school teams and offerings. There's a lump of money in there, and it's, quite frankly, it's gonna be based on what the kids sign up for. So we run a lot of things for, you know, a handful of kids. With the impact of the tax rate, we may not be able to do that. So, but again, it'll be based on, we're not deciding tonight whether we have this or that. The money would be there as a pool, and it would be based, based on what the kids end up signing up for. The after-school program, the 1,490 account, there's a $30,000 subsidy that's been in that, in that line item, and we've eliminated that subsidy. I've talked with the selectmen and also the park and rec director, they're aware of that's in, that cut has been made. So overall, the appropriations total is down $418,087 from last year. It's a 5.2% cut in appropriations. On the revenue side of the budget, you'll note that revenues are down $177,266. We have zero in the unreserved fund balance. We will have an unreserved fund balance if everything goes well. It's just that this time of year, we always present zero, so the community gets worst-case scenario, and then they get to vote on that. Our adequate education grant is down $13,376, that's based on an estimate from the state. And I, that's an estimate from the state, last year's estimate, the state did not, we didn't get the money, the state did, that was part of the reason, that we took a little bit of a surprise in our, in our school portion of the tax rate. So we gotta go with what the state gives us at this moment in time. CAT 8 is down a bit. Our regular tuition is down $75,000. That's a reflection of, quite frankly, just, we have some Ellsworth kids who come here, but there's no more Warren kids, there's, I mean, we're really down to just a handful of kids coming from Ellsworth. And then IDEA funding, that's down, special ed from the federal government, that's down $25,000. So you can see we're down $164,000. So that appropriations cut of 418, and then you take the revenue we're not gonna get, 177. That means the total assessment in this budget is down 238,770, which would reflect a 55 cent cut on the tax rate. Again, this is exclusive of any Warren articles that take place. I know we've talked about greenhouse, I know we've talked about partitions in one of the wings, and that certainly is something the board can talk about, but neither is contained in the budget. All right? Again, my motivation was to keep our core educational program as intact as I could. Julie, you wanna talk a little bit about the class size structure?
Sure.
What we'll do tonight is just sort of say, here's, here are the class size numbers, here are potential opportunities, and then in January, we'll talk about, we'll see, one, see if the numbers change, and two, where do you want to go with the overall budget?
So just a breakdown of what it looks like with the anticipated enrollment for next year for, with two teachers per grade, just the class size breakdown, or three teachers per grade. So just to walk through it, Frank Gonzalez went and did some research and got the input from all of the different preschools and daycares in the community. And right now, we have 37 definite heads coming to Plymouth Elementary School. And that's really helpful, that we did that last year, and that number was still pretty accurate, I think, within five students. So that's, that's a pretty solid number, and we won't really know until May. So that's why I know that, that we have always talked about keeping those class sizes at the younger grade smaller. So that's where I would envision three teachers. In grade one, we have 30 students and two teachers this year, so we would keep the same for next year, two teachers, 15 and 15. Grade two, we have 46 students for next year, so if we had two teachers, it would be 23 and 23, or 15, 15, and 16. Grade three, it's, grade three and four, that always seems to be the area where we land. Grade three, we have 37 students. If we had two teachers, the student-teacher ratio would be, uh, two teachers, it would be 18 and 19. If we had three, it would be 12, 12, and 13. In grade four, 41 students. If we had two teachers, it would be 20 students in 20 and 21. If we had three teachers, 13, 14, and 14. Grade five, 49 students, 24 and 25. Grade five is when we start to move more toward content area, but, and that's a pretty big class size for us. Grade six, grade six, seven, and eight, and those are quite the fluctuations in numbers to go from 61 one year, 41 the next year. But those are, those are the grades where we really stick with the three teachers per grade because of the content.
Yeah, based on certification for content. You can do self-contained in 6th grade, but it's worked very well for us to run it similar to the 7th and 8th grade because of the impact of content. So those are the numbers, and those are the conversations that we'll have in January in terms of specifics. But certainly, we could talk tonight about numbers in general if you'd like. And the specialists are all in the budget. The only reduction has been that .6 position that we haven't filled the last couple of years, and...
If we went to two teachers in one of the lower grades, could we add in an aide of some sort into one of those classes?
Yeah, we'd have the interventionist, and two program aides with the interventionist. So you have, you have three people working on content. Both the aides are, one of the aides is certifiable.
Right.
And the other is, both are really certifiable, yeah. So we're, we're pretty comfortable with the interventionist model. We think that focusing on those tier-two kids, those kids that just need a little bit of help, they're not identified, they're just falling behind, and just a boost here and a boost there, I think that program works pretty well for them. So, you know, when you look at numbers like 18 and 19, and then you have an interventionist and the programming staff, I'm pretty comfortable with two teachers at that level. They'll be together, you'll have the larger sizes for, for phys ed and those sorts of things. But again, in terms of, of, you know, content, you'd have, you know, 27 divided potentially by three. If the interventionist is there with the, with the two, with the two teachers, so you're looking at learning groups of, you know, nine kids, 10 kids, and that's certainly very, very reasonable. I mean, it's private school standard, so.
What's the makeup of these classes, though? That's a big, always a big issue.
Right. We have in 2nd grade, next year's 2nd grade will have eight special education students. And then the other big, big classes, grade three has six, grade four will have seven, grade five has 10 special education students.
Yeah, we touched grade five anyway. Grade three and grade four.
Do all of the special ed students have someone assigned to them?
No, they do not.
So is there a level of representation? Do you have a rough idea of, you know, the six, six students in grade three? Do we know roughly how many specialists there are?
For next year?
Yeah.
We have probably two or three other adults in that grade level. Who support, and the special ed staff does a great job as far as placing them so that they, they help a lot of students. The tier-two support that you supported us with this year is really taking root, I mean, it's just starting to take hold. We have not had this, last year, Fran and Kyla came and talked about just that we're really strong as far as tier one, our overall instruction, and we have, we're really strong with tier, tier three with our programs. But that tier-two piece has been an area that, you know, we've just been hustling all the time trying to make that work. So this has been a year where we really had a chance to spend a lot of time and give a lot of support to students. You can see in the cafeteria, in the library, there are tables where students are working together and reading, so it's, it would like, it would be nice to kind of keep that strong.
What's the impact of the budget of taking one teacher, about $100,000?
Roughly.
Roughly?
But again, we, if you, if we move, the current first grade has three, three teachers, right? So if we move one of those teachers, or anybody, could come from a segment, into kindergarten, then you're fine, you've met Julie's request. The issue becomes, if you take, you know, if we, if we reduce a little bit more, then that would be, that would be a savings. So, and $100,000 is not a bad number to work with, there are some, some folks who are more expensive, some people less expensive. And that's just for the cameras, that's not someone's salary, that's salary and entire benefit package.
The whole package.
Right, exactly.
Any questions?
I appreciate having the information in front of us, I think it'll make it a lot easier to discuss this again.
Any other business and discussions?
No.
Okay. Privilege of the floor.
So I have a question about, sorry, you ahead. Okay. So I have a question about cutting the $30,000 for Parks and Rec.
Yes.
Is that money gonna be made up somewhere else through Parks and Rec budgets specifically, or are they just out with 30K?
That would be, that would either be made up by Park and Rec budget at the town level, or it would be higher fees for folks using the service.
I just, my, one of my soapbox comments is always class size, and I think I've always said that, and I know it's just the beginning of the discussions, but I do think it's an investment in the community to keep the class sizes smaller. You create a family, create more of a community-type environment, you have those, those more natural, smaller class sizes. class sizes. It feels, feels like family.
Mr. Chen?
I just wanna give my two cents that.
I would, I would, probably not counter, but I, to make you aware, that if you wanted the smaller class sizes, one of the options would be to cut the RTI support. So, and then the responsibility for tiers, tiers two and three would be with the, with the classroom teacher. So please be aware of, of that.
Can I ask you a question? In, in terms of context, what is small to you? Is there, is there a border?
I think eighteen, nineteen, twenty is getting too big, personally. It's a very different deal between nineteen students, twenty students, fifteen. I know it's only four or five students, but in my twenty years' experience, that's smaller size.
Okay, any more comment? Well, thank you. Okay. I will entertain a motion to go in the non-public session. Second? Well, thank you.